Okay, it is 10 a.m. and the recording has started. It's Monday, March 15th, 2021, 10 a.m., and this is our regularly scheduled city council work session. And first on our agenda this morning, I'd like to invite Terry Wilcox to introduce some of our new city employees.
All right, good morning, everybody. Our first person that we're going to be introducing today is Nancy Bart. She works at the animal shelter, and I think we have Chief Hall on the line here somewhere to introduce her.
Terry, I don't know that we have Chief Hall with us this morning because this police department's working on an active missing juvenile case. So I think unfortunately, Chief Hall isn't here to introduce her. Do you think you could do that?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. This is Nancy Bart. She is our wonderful animal shelter technician. So far, has had a great time working there, and I'm going to let you talk a little bit about yourself.
I just feel so privileged to be here and to meet all of you. I love my new job. It's more than a job. It's... The people are wonderful. Of course, the animals are always wonderful. I just thank you so much for picking me. It means a lot to me, and I'm going to work extra hard.
Well, welcome to the team. We're glad to have you. The animal shelter is a great facility.
It is. Thank you.
Right, thank you. So our next person is Deborah Buick. Yay, I got it right. And Jim is here, I think, to introduce her.
Yeah, again, just ever knew our team at Public Works. She's been very helpful already in our customer service rep role, and I'll let Deborah tell you a little more about herself.
Okay, well, it's good to be here. I am a Colorado native, grew up in Denver and Craig, lived in Grand Junction. Prior to moving to Montrose 10 years ago, I lived in Zambia and had to come back to Colorado weather. So it was a little bit of an adjustment there. To tell you a little bit about my background, I have worked a lot of jobs over the six years that I've been around. Most of them have actually been in areas where I worked with a whole lot of men, and I was a lot of times the only woman, and that's where I'm at now. So it's like being home again to have to work with all the gentlemen down there. I have seven grandchildren, two children, and am expecting my first great-grandchild in May. So I'm up there. I'm an old bird, as Nancy was saying earlier. But it's been really great. It's going to be a challenge here in the future because Margot is leaving, and I feel like I'm in the deep end at the moment. But Jim is going to be there to help me out, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Glad to have you.
And just so you know, we changed that from old bird to tough bird. So our next person that we'll be introducing is Ariana Metz.
Yes.
Got close?
Yes.
And she's the civilian report taker, customer service technician in the police department from the area, pretty much. And I'll let her introduce herself.
Good morning. So I'm Ariana Metz. Recently moved back to Montrose from Utah, where I was doing basically the same job that I'm doing now. So I was really excited to be able to find an opening where I could do the same thing because I absolutely love this job. Nancy said I was from the region, which I am. I actually was born in Mexico, who moved here when I was three or four, and loved it, love it here. This is my home, so you guys are stuck with me for a while.
Great. We're glad to have you. Welcome.
Glad to be here. Thank you.
And the next person we're introducing today is Sam Vallejos. And she is our HR generalist, and we are very excited that we were able to steal her from the recreation district. We love stealing great people, and she is another local, and I'll let her introduce herself.
Hello, thank you so much. As Terry said, you guys did steal me, but I do know a lot of the people here. I've grown up here. It's funny, I recognize names, but all from their grandchildren, so it's always funny to meet my council members and know the names right off the bat. But I have had experience with some of you at the rec district, so it's nice to see you in this venue as well.
Welcome. We're glad to have you. The city stole me from the rec district, too.
I thought so.
Thank you. Thank you, Sam. I think it went out of order. Sorry about that. Our next introduction is for Ashley P. Tech. And I think Lisa Kozmarski, hopefully she is available to introduce her.
Terry, I do not see Lisa on our panel.
Okay, well, I can get this started.
Oh, there she is. Terry, she is now. So if she unmutes, then we'll be able to hear her.
Had to get promoted.
Good morning. Can everyone hear me? Awesome. I would like to introduce Ashley P. Tech. She is our guest services and visitor center manager, and we are very happy to have her here at OBT. So Ashley, I'll let you talk.
Thank you, Lisa. Nice to meet everyone. I think I pretty much know most of city council throughout the years. I'm super excited to finally be on the city team. Previous to this, I was with the Hawaiian Express here in Montrose for the last almost five years as their director of sales. I managed all of their large group and events bookings. And before that, I was with the Chamber of Commerce back when the Chamber housed the visitor center and served on various committees within the city, like track and the DART committee while I was in the private sector. So I am very excited for the opportunity to be a part of the city of Montrose team. When I heard about this opportunity, it seemed like the perfect fit. When I'm not at work, you'll find me at home with my newly-turned-six-year-old Willow, and we just adopted a puppy for Christmas. So Willow and Silver and I were a girl-run household, so you'll find us doing all the girly things. Silver gets dressed up in dresses on daily basis. But yeah, very happy to be here and nice to officially meet you all.
Thanks. We're glad to have you on our team.
Thank you.
And our last introduction is for Bridget Warren, our new restaurant manager. Anne?
Good morning, city council. I am very excited to introduce Bridget Warren here. She started last week, so brand-new to the city of Montrose staff. She's our restaurant manager at the Black Canyon Golf Course, and that restaurant is called The Rusty Putter. And Bridget, welcome, and please tell us about yourself and about your background in restaurants.
Good morning. My name is Bridget. As I said, I'm going to be the manager at The Rusty Putter. I've been in the food and industry business for a long time. Started out at the LA County Fair, doing selling water at like 15, and then just slowly moved up from there. Now I'm here, and I'm excited and very thankful to be part of this team and excited to see what this summer brings for us. Can't wait to see you guys all out there on the course. Besides work, I'll be with my daughter. She's 10. She's very active in the rec district community, playing all the sports and starting middle school next year, so we're busy, busy right now.
Great, welcome. We're glad to have you on the team. I know I'm excited to get down there and see the changes to the restaurant.
And keeping with the theme, we're sorry to have stolen her from Jimers, where she was a valuable team member, but we're very excited that she's here with the city of Montrose now.
And I really just want to close and say what a wonderful group of new employees we have here. We are so excited to have them. Thank you.
Thank you, and have a great day with your new employee training that you have going on. Okay, next on our agenda this morning, we're going to move over to our discussion items. The first one is the MURA Phase Two Public Infrastructure Contract Award, and I will turn it over to city engineer Scott Murphy to tell us more about this.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think we'll be joined here by Kurt Sukup in a second. He's also the developer for this project, so would like to morph work. Hello, Kurt. So I'll run through the public side of this. Probably, let me screen share here. I'll just run through the memo really quick, kind of saw the background on this project. So what we're looking at here is the Southern Extension of Utilities and Infrastructure to support. It's the Base Camp Apartments project within the URA. So south of North Ninth Street, between Sixth and Ninth. The URA backed starting in early 2020, seems about five years ago, but entered into a development agreement with Range Development, and that's Kurt Sukup here, to help facilitate the construction of 96 apartment units. As part of that, the URA at that time awarded a design contract to Belmont Consultants to get going on all the mainline public infrastructure utility extensions. There was a typo in the memo. I'll fix for the next go-around. It's actually a design contract that you'll see here. So that got started in early 2020 through the URA board. That was funded by the URA. And then, you know, as all the various pots of money and way the projects landed, the city decided to fund the public infrastructure side of things out of the city's budget. And I'll go more into the budgeting numbers later. So what you have, let me scroll down to the map here, is here's North Ninth Street, here's North Sixth Street, 96 apartments, 96 apartment units looking to go in right here. And then the city was going to extend water sewer, gas, and then conduit for communications utilities down to Sixth, and then construct Sixth itself as public infrastructure, since these are mainline utilities and a public street in the name of supporting housing. So we really, you know, this is, these are market-rate apartments, very high demand, high need in our community right now. And so in the name of that, that's where the city was participating here. Second to that, as part of the development agreement, the URA is helping with some of the parking lot horizontal improvements, not the buildings themselves, but some of the stuff that's outside the building, such as curb gutter paving, things of that sort. That's all being done separate through the URA. So what we're talking about today is the public project. Let's see, so that started early 2021, or sorry, started in early 2020. We worked through design throughout the year, a little bit of slowdown due to COVID and just what the market was going to do, but still continued progressing on it. Got it out for bid and are ready to look at potential contract award. So I'll pause there before I go into the bidding and expenditures. If there's any questions on the project overall or its history. Not seeing any. Okay, I'll march on to the bidding. So once we got the design complete, we went out to bid in February, opened bids on March 3rd, had a really good bid showing. And the market, so we're, you know, the market's pretty volatile right now, just with COVID and supply chain issues and all that. Seems that that's hitting more on the vertical side, so when you're talking construction of buildings themselves, all of this work is horizontal, you know, utilities and site work. So we didn't see any major disruptions. These prices came in about where we thought they would, which was encouraging. This was our first big bid of the year, so we didn't know what it was going to be doing with the market. But all indications are things are tracking well. Got a low bid of 1.08 million essentially for the infrastructure itself. Those numbers include a 10% contingency. You know, this product has several elements. So you have the construction contract for the core construction work itself. In addition to that, we have, we hire the designers to help with some of the technical issues, if anything comes up during design, and then also to do all the construction surveying and stakeout to make sure that we have continuity between design and construction, to make sure there aren't any survey or design issues. And then this one, as I mentioned earlier, includes the extension of dry utilities, what we call them. So that's power, gas, and communications. So those are, instead of running those through the contractor and having to pay an additional markup, those we pay directly. So that's estimated at 265,000 total. 225 of that is to DMEA and another 40 to Black Hills Energy. Both of those numbers do include a 10% contingency because those, we only pay the actuals. So these are, think of these as budgetary numbers, just to account for any uncertainty. But we have received the initial quotes and estimates from both companies as the basis for these numbers. One other thing I'll mention on those is that we are currently working with Black Hills Energy. They have incentive programs for extension of mainline utilities. So there's a chance that this 40,000 might get credited back, depending on how the project unfolds. That's still uncertain, so I'm including it for now just to be safe. But if that comes to fruition, that cost would go away. That's another, you know, they actually reached out to us. It was a great partnership that, you know, we didn't even know they had these programs, and they're coming to us to try and help facilitate these projects. So, you know, kind of community-minded organization. So we were happy to see that. You add all those together, the project cost comes in at 1.41 million that we would eventually be seeking approval on. As far as the schedule goes, so the development agreement with the URA and Base Camp Apartments pulling a building permit by April 1st of this year as part of their side of the deal. So they're on track to do that. They'll probably be pulling their foundation permit to get going on excavation here in the next week or two, as we understand it. The, also under that agreement, all 96 units have to be completed by December 31st, 2023. So on the city side, so we're talking about it at work session here. Once they do pull this permit and are kind of breaking ground and going in earnest on the project, we'll come back for final approval from city council. The idea there is, you know, these agreements are set up that the city doesn't expose itself and start down something if something were to change. So once they're breaking ground, we're breaking ground essentially to kind of keep that protection for the city. And that's typical of all of these types of development projects. The construction itself, depending on, as long as we don't get into, you know, late-season paving or anything like that, should take about six months to complete, as long as there aren't any pandemic-related supply chain issues that come up. There is some specialty piping on this project. It's 30-inch sewer pipe, which can sometimes create lead time issues. Right now, it's looking good, as long as we hit our target dates. But I always have to throw that caveat in there because sometimes, you know, anytime there's a, any kind of storm event, anywhere in the US, or sometimes even the world, it seems like they use it as an excuse to disrupt the supply chain and drive up prices and make our lives complicated. So that's not a contractor thing. That's a supplier chain thing. Pretty typical of construction. So on the financial side, so as I said, 1.41 million. We pretty conservatively budgeted this, or did the cost estimation for this back in 2019. We had 2.47 million allocated. You know, initially, the project was a little more complicated with additional roads coming through, more utility complications. You know, as the design got refined, it got more and more simple, which is good. So that places us quite a bit under budget, 1.06 million compared to the 1.41 comparing 4.7. So sitting really good financially. We're very pleased to see that. You know, we try and under-promise and over-deliver, usually not that large, but it's just kind of the way this project worked out, which is good. All came in favorable. So I think with that, I'd turn it back to council to see if you guys have any questions. And again, on the date, we'd be coming back for a formal council meeting. Isn't set yet. But just getting the introduction out of the way now. And then, you know, we'd come back depending on the timeline on the private side. But yeah, happy to answer any questions. And Kurt's here also, if you have any questions of him on the private side of things.
I see a question from Mr. Anderson.
So Scott, the summary of the bid results, there's two Montrose companies. Do those bid totals reflect our local preference, or is that before you applied?
Yep. So the local preference, it's 5% for Montrose counties, 3% for adjacent counties, and then up to a $50,000 dollar max, so it maxes out at a million-dollar contract, which is about right of a rap. So change the outcome of bidding in this case. But yeah, it was a nail-biter. You know, you see one and two or $3,700 apart or something like that, if I remember right.
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty, pretty rare. We actually had, in the last three years, we've had three bids within less than a half percent between first and second. So it's, you know, preference can very much sway something like that. In this case, you know, Hodgkins is one county out, and Grand Junction is one county out, so they both got the same discount essentially.
Okay. And have we worked with Mountain Valley before?
Yep. So Mountain Valley's done, oh, probably 10 million or so have worked for us. They've done all of our move-mow projects. They, yeah, they shot Crete wall underpass, and we kind of had that issue on the trail last year. They came in and kind of saved us with that. They did the bridge on Auto Road. They did Sero, and...
I thought it sounded familiar, but I couldn't remember exactly.
Yeah, they're, oh, and then they did that water line on 60, or on Miami, a couple of years ago. So yeah, they're pretty typical competitive bidder, good to work with, qualified for this type of work.
Good deal. Thanks.
I have a question for Mr. Sukup. I see that the contract says that the apartments will be complete by December 2023. I would, do you have, are you hoping to have them done sooner? And if so, what do you think is your optimistic timeline?
I'm currently, hi. I am actually playing two Zoom calls right now, unfortunately, and the other is with the GC. We're talking about at most 12 to 14 months. We'll start April 6th or whatever the date is. So 2023 is just, you know, the comfort level. I would say that we're really looking at 12 to 14 months, and that's what at least the GC is informing me now.
Great. That's what I was hoping, that we would see these apartments come online to our community, which has an urgent need for housing sooner than that, and it sounds like optimistically, we will see that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
Certainly.
Any other questions for either Mr. Murphy or Mr. Sukup on this project?
I just wanted to compliment Scott on the hard work. I mean, the diligence to make sure that we had got these bids coming in at a significantly lower package is very important. Thank you. Good job.
And the closeness of the bids leads me to believe that what you're requesting is so specific that they can give you really accurate bids. So appreciate that as well. We don't often see cost overruns, I think. So thanks. Okay, so no other questions on that one. I'll go back to our agenda. Our next item for discussion is the North Second Street Right-of-Way Vacation Ordinance. Good morning, senior planner Amy Sharp.
Good morning, and thank you, city council. I'm going to start with sharing my screen, just so I can share a map of the area. I think that'll help make sense of everything a little bit better than just talking about it. So this location is around 127 North Lot Avenue, and this kind of, this star points to the general location of this project area. So this is kind of what's going on in this area. So you can see that this existing house on 127 North Lot, there's a portion of the house right here that's located within the city right-of-way. And so the yellow area shows the owner's property line, and then this blue area shows approximately the vacation area. And so the owner has requested that the city vacate this area that's kind of outlined in blue here. It's about 1,800 square feet along the North Second right-of-way, so that they can own all the property on which their house is actually located. The city would keep about an 88-foot right-of-way over here on the west end, next to the park, and that would be sufficient for street and sidewalks in the future, should they be needed. It also has the additional benefit, like not only putting their entire house on their own private land, but it'll make the property big enough that it could then be further subdivided with our redo district and subdivision regulations to build an additional property on that lot. So the owner has actually committed to building at least one additional dwelling unit on the side as part of the redevelopment plan that would be submitted to the city and approved administratively. And so city staff is recommending that this right-of-way strip be vacated at no cost to the adjacent owner in order to help facilitate more additional housing in the downtown area, which is very needed. The right-of-way vacation is permitted because the area is no longer needed by the city for utility or other purposes. And so when the city no longer has a need for that property, it is vacated back to the adjacent landowner. That's all I have on that one. I'll leave the map up in case you guys have any specific questions on this one.
I have a question, and maybe it's legal, or maybe it's you. But when we say yes, we'll vacate that property if you build an additional dwelling unit, do we enter into a contract or something such that if they don't do that, they owe the city perhaps some money for that property?
The basic principle on right-of-ways, Barbara, is that the city has a civic purpose for that piece of property and that we are taking that piece of property or restricting other, the true owner's right to use that property for the civic good. And when that civic good no longer exists, it is, the practice throughout the country is that the land goes back to that rightful owner. We kind of view it as we're not the rightful owner that adjacent landowner is. If we don't have the right to it, or if we don't have the need to it, it should go back to the adjacent landowner.
Okay, so we're giving up the right-of-way. We're not necessarily, we aren't the property owner. We're the right-of-way owner.
Right, but we're, but we're restricting the use. We're saying that you can't build anything on that. You can't subdivide it. So in many ways, we're making it useless to that landowner because all it is is a hunk of land.
So really, I mean, they own the property, and the city owns the right-of-way, and we're giving up the right-of-way?
Correct.
Okay, the way that a lot of us perhaps have a right-of-way in our property that we might not even be aware of, where, I mean, property owners sometimes don't know that. I mean, they obviously, they, at one point in time, they built a house on it. So I think, I don't know. Okay, it's interesting when you see this.
My question is, when was this home built?
Oh, boy. I don't know for sure. It's a good question. I'd have to research that to find out for sure. I don't know how old it is.
And does... I would assume that many of these homes we have around town that have infringed upon these right-of-ways must have been built quite a while back.
How do they get past the permitting process if they're building a structure on an existing right-of-way?
The, I think a lot of that has changed with GIS, that things that people were able to get by with before, as soon, you know, they don't get past their expense in now. And that's one, it shows one of the values of GIS. But I mean, there is a, a lot of times what happens on commercial buildings, when they start doing the title research and stuff like that, they realize that they have 20 feet of their office building is in a right-of-way. And then it causes a lot of headaches for the city. I mean, we don't want to force them to tear it down, but if there is a true need to have access to the pipes or sewer line underneath, we'll sometimes vacate the right-of-way or give them a variance, an encroachment permit. But they realize that if the city has to get into that pipe, and there's no other way to do it, that we're going to slice off that corner of the building so we can get into it.
Amy, does that current lot line encompass that right-of-way? Amy, does that current, uh, lot line encompass that right of way?
Let me show a picture again here so I can make sure I'm talking about the same thing as you.
Yeah, the current deeded and platted property line.
It's just the yellow portion.
It's just the yellow portion. So they don't currently own or have right to that blue area.
Correct. And so that's what we would be vacating. So then their house is entirely on their property.
So then they would have to do a property line adjustment to actually claim that blue area?
Um, we're able to do that administratively and then they'll come in with a follow-up application, which is also an administrative application. To then do a redo district or subdivision property. So they can do like an accessory dwelling unit or put another house on this property as well.
It sounds like you're saying a lot of this can be done administratively, which means can be done, um, by the city staff without council. Um, being involved. That's what that means. However, vacating a right of way seems to require council's approval. And that's why I'm talking about all of this. Okay.
Exactly.
Great. I think that, I think, I think we've exhausted this subject. It's interesting and I think it won't be the, it isn't the first and it isn't the last time we'll see it.
Yeah, I think I have a pile of three or four more that I need to work on once I find the time. So.
I appreciate all the detail on something that is really quite straightforward. Um, but I think it helps us understand where, where council's involved in the project and, um, where our staff is involved in the project. And maybe the next one will take less time.
And I like being kept in the loop.
One item too, Barbara, that you kind of touched on, when it comes to right of ways, it's not only roads. I think you'll find probably every lot in town has a utility right of way also.
Well, and to that extent, how is a right of way different than an easement? Scott's gonna rescue you on this one.
You didn't even see the bus, did you?
Uh, this, this is good stuff. You wanna talk to Stephen or you want me to dive into some of that?
You can.
Um, so an easement's different in that, so easements are pretty common for utilities or trails, um, less hard improvements and mostly more below ground improvements. So an easement is a right to a use of the land. So you have, um, lands owned by the person underneath, um, fee owner, you know, fee simple ownership. They have an easement on top of that, which encumbers that land, but doesn't, it doesn't own it. Um, you know, and so there's, depending on the language of the easement, you can do easements for all kinds of things. You can do view easements, utility easements are the most common. Um, and with specific language of what you can, can't do within that easement, then somebody holds that easement. So, um. Uh, utilities are really common, you know, so, uh, mostly within the town, we, like in the residential areas, we have fifty-foot right of ways. And then twenty-foot easements behind the roads. You know, so the right of way is blocked out as, you know, essentially. I wanna say it's fee simple ownership, but it's a right of way for that land that's not owned by, you know, the, the adjacent landowners, the lots. Um, and then the easements are where, you know, you have your gas power and communications running on the front on both sides that people can tap into. Um, so that's, that's the primary distinction, but there's a lot of, there's twenty layers to all those different things and history and rights and all that. If you, if you guys ever wanna talk, I'm free. So.
So you can't build a road on an easement, but you can build a road on a right of way?
There's exceptions, but generally, yes. Um, yep, there are exceptions depending on easement language and stuff, um, to that.
I think this is what staff means when they say we have a very involved council currently. Okay. With anything else or can we, okay, I, I, it's all fun to learn about. So thanks for indulging us on learning a little bit more about that this morning. We look forward to seeing the actual vote on this upcoming city council meeting. Thank you. Okay. Next up, daytime social services municipal code revisions. And, um, this looks like it's gonna be presented to us by both Amy Sharp and our Assistant City Attorney, Matthew Magliaro. Good morning.
Good morning and thank you again. Well, um, I'm gonna just start with the introduction and then I'm gonna turn it over to Matt for all the fun legal stuff. Um, so as you know, we've undertaken a review of our code in order to specify the types of uses, um, for daytime social services. And where that's appropriate. Um, it's located or where they're gonna be allowed is in the B one, B two, B two A and B three zoning district. So if you look in our code right now and you're looking through, I'll use, for example, the B three zoning district. It says in our B three zoning district that anything that's allowed in the B one zoning district is also allowed in B three. And that's the same for the B two and B two A. And so we're only needing to make an amendment to the B one. Um, per, portion of the code, because then it will also apply to those other zoning districts as well. Our B four zoning district, even though it's a B zoning district, it's pretty different in that it's meant for neighborhood shopping centers. And it does not include language in there that states that everything located in B one is also located in B four. So as we go through this, um, it includes all of our B zoning districts except for the B four neighborhood shopping district. So it won't apply to that one. Um, this effort is gonna suggest modifications to our code, um, to include daytime social services in these zoning districts as a use by right. Um, there are currently, um, things such as food banks and soup kitchens and counseling centers. That are currently located in our B one, B two, B two A or B three zoning districts. And so we just want to very, um, more clarify that those are allowed in these zoning districts. Um, it provides clarification for future similar uses as well. These daytime social services are compatible with other uses by right. If you look through our zoning designations for what's currently allowed in B one, you'll see that these are very much so in line with some of the other types of uses. That are allowed in B one. It does meet the intent of our commercial district. Uh, states that it provides for the exchange of goods and services in a reasonable and orderly manner. So that's the actual intent of our B zoning districts. We do believe that it fits in with those, um, intent. And with that, I'll turn it over to Matt.
Thank you, Amy. Uh, good morning, Madam Mayor, uh, members of city council and members of the public, uh, watching via Zoom. Uh, for the record, my name is Matt Magliaro. I'm Assistant City Attorney for the City Montrose. I'm co-presenting today with Amy Sharp, our city's, uh, senior planner, uh, on a revision, a proposed revision to the zoning code. A redline version appears on pages thirteen through fifteen of today's session packet. And a clean version appears on the following pages, sixteen through eighteen, and a memo is on page twelve. Uh, my presentation, my piece of it will focus on page fourteen of the redline version. Uh, executive summary here, uh, the proposed code language is a single amendment to Montrose Code Section four dash four dash twelve. Setting forth the B one zoning designation to add a new section B twenty to the listings of uses by right. The only amendment to this section is the addition, uh, which appears on that page fourteen. The coverage of the language is intended to encompass providers of social services cited throughout the city. And spread throughout the zoning map or across the zoning map, like food banks, uh, food distribution hubs. And other social services such as counseling, which offer their services without taking monetary payment from a client. This language is to clarify their use within the B one, B two, B two A and B three zoning districts is an authorized one by city zoning. And that they are able to operate, uh, consistent with that zoning to perform those services for the benefit of the indigent. Uh, as Amy touched on, uh, under our code, you council authorize this change, it would carry forward as an authorized use. In those, uh, three other zoning designations, um, B two through B three. Each of those zoning designations allow those uses by right enumerated in B one as a use by right in turn, uh, just by the way, and given our, how our code is structured. Um, the exception was the B four neighborhood shopping district, which Amy mentioned. Purpose, the amendment proposed, uh, has desirability from a social utilitarian perspective during the current recession, uh, occasioned by the pandemic. Uh, our domestic economy is down approximately nine point five million jobs, um, from the pre-pandemic levels in February of twenty twenty. Accordingly, uh, there's been a larger demand nationally, uh, as well as locally for, uh, these types of social service providers. Uh, the change is also, uh, consistent with the overall purposes of the zoning code and city Montrose, uh, which are listed in four dash four dash one. Specifically, the purpose of the zoning regulations is to promote the public health, safety and welfare. That's reading from sub B of that section. Definitions, um, there's a definitional section within the city zoning code in Montrose Code four dash four dash two. There is no amendment intended to add definitions to that section, uh, for some of the terms and phrases used in the language here. Uh, and those, these terms are not, uh, defined, uh, elsewhere in the code. Daytime social service activity, social service provider, food pantry and soup kitchen are undefined terms. As there are likely to be services offered that we have not specifically listed here by provider or cooperative providers. We've left some room for, uh, development as well as interpretation in this area. Um, as technology changes, society, lots of social service providers adapt, um, their offerings to society. Uh, an example, um, is a free use electronic charging station that a social service provider may, uh, set out for their clientele. So for example, a transient crime victim issued a cell phone by a crisis center could charge that phone and use it to contact, uh, persons in law enforcement. Uh, would be something that would fall under this, uh, daytime social service activity. Um, it's not listed or enumerated. Um, that said, um, it would be something that I believe would be fit in under there. Uh, that may not have been something that we would have considered, uh, as, uh, enumerated use fifteen, you know, fifteen years ago or so. But it's one that's, would be an appropriate daytime social service activity, uh, offered by a social service provider now. That does not mean, just because there's no definitions, it does not mean that there's no limit to this use authorization. This is in a, meant as an exception that swallows the rule. Um, the court would look to an introductory phrase, daytime social service activities by social service provider to include. To modify the terms that are listed after that. Uh, and in turn, a court would define the introductory phrases, um, by use of general candidates of construction. That provide further meaning to that term. So there's one that came mine, um, called a justum generis. Which under that rule, construction, uh, the general clause, which is one I just read, should be read to be given effect to the specifically defined terms. And should itself be controlled and defined by reference to the enumerated categories of specifically defined terms, which were recited just before it. So the introductory phrase for twenty of daytime social service activities by social service provider. Would draw its definition from the terms that follow it and also that precede it within the listing there. Um, and that discussion brings up, or this part of the discussion brings up the issue of fit. Of the proposed change within the code and compatibility, which Amy touched on, um, B one. The, um, central business district encompasses the commercial district featuring the exchange of goods and services. But also includes as a use by right, places of worship, childcare facilities, um, accessory uses to those. And some conditional uses such as distribution warehouse and wholesale operations. So there seems to be some fit. Between, um, the proposal and the existing uses and one conditional use, uh, within that. And that's why it's, uh, submitted within the B one designation. I wanna express, uh, um, the, or I wanna touch on the express exclusion. We wanna emphasize the express exclusion here. This does not authorize as a use by right an overnight shelter. Uh, I wanna make that very clear to, for the record, not just to, uh, council and folks listening, uh. That the, there is that express exclusion in the language. Uh, such a use to the extent that it's authorized by council in the future is more properly geared towards its owning, own zoning designation. And comprehensive regulations that comes about with extensive discussions with relevant stakeholders. For example, providers seeking to set up such a service, uh, other social so, service providers that may provide attendant services to that use. The city management team, county public health and D H H S and public safety, fire department, EMS and, uh, police services as well as nine one one dispatch. Can name a few. So there is an express exclusion within the language built in there. Uh, that's the, some of my presentation. I'll, I'll turn to council for any questions.
Thank you very much.
I do have a quick question.
Frank has a question.
Um, one of the things that specifies in here is that the exclusion of monetary renew, remuneration. For soup kitchens, laundry, et cetera. Um, does the exclusion to monetary remuneration also include the counseling? Portion of this, because it specifies that counseling to include alcohol and or substance abuse. And or religious education and counseling. Can those services charge since they aren't expressly prohibited? From getting remuneration?
I thought of that question. I could see a counselor who offers such counseling services, um. Or for profit and has a for-profit counseling business, um, either as an L C or an L O P. But nonetheless, offering pro bono services to a nonprofit. Or, um, alternatively, offering a sliding scale or lesser fee. Potentially that could fall under that where, um, not just pro bono work, but a lesser, uh, charging scale could fall under that. Um, I would say yes.
So Dave, the real purpose of the without remuneration is we have to differentiate it from a restaurant. So providing food with, with, if, if we don't say without re, remuneration, it gets confusing. And definitions of between what is a soup kitchen, uh, what is a, uh, restaurant?
So does that apply to the, the food part or does it apply to all of it?
That was more of the point. I understand the, the exemption for remuneration for a food pantry or food service. To distinction between a restaurant and a soup kitchen. The question was more whether a counselor could be providing for pay services under this.
The remuneration only goes to the, uh, to the, uh.
Specified items?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that's really kind of where I was aiming with that one. Thank you.
I'm sorry, but I feel like we do need some clarification here because the intent was to imply it to multiple, um, of those listing items. For example, laundromats are not allowed in this own district and we don't intend to create, uh, um, allowance for laundromats. In this, in B one. And so laundry without remuneration is allowed. Um, because we know that this is a service that's sometimes provided by these daytime shelter uses. Um, so that was the intent and perhaps we need to chat, um, discuss internally. But already uses like counseling are allowed as an office use, um, per the zone district. So we weren't concerned so much about that. We were trying to specify these uses that occur more as social services uses. So, um, these food pantries and soup kitchens, these are not restaurants. And so we worked to try and clarify what is this type of use and then allow it specifically in the zone districts. And again, only for daytime use. Um, nighttime uses are not allowed. So, um, a shelter use that goes overnight would not be allowed. But just to clarify that about kind of the laundry aspects that we tried to address through this code amendment. And Matt, um, please feel free to help me clarify if I might be confusing anything.
Listen, I just wanna add, I think that's covered in because we put laundry facilities for not-for-profit. And because each one of these is separated by a semicolon, it's standalone. It shows it doesn't apply to the entire paragraph. So I think we're okay with what you just described.
I would concur.
Okay, Mr. Glassball.
One of the questions I have, and several of the items listed in this ordinance talk to parking. Are we addressing any parking issues here or do you not anticipate this to be an issue?
We are not addressing parking at this time in this particular one. Um, and just a little more background, just so everybody knows. I know a couple of you know, because we've talked individually when you've asked me questions, but, uh, the impetus behind this update was Shepherd's Hand. Uh, working out of the, the old funeral home location. And so that got us working with them and trying to figure out a way that we could accommodate. The needs of all the, um, populations Matt was referring to. Try to support what Shepherd's Hand and, and the groups are doing, but not at the expense of the entire business community. And so that was, maybe that gives a little more context. That's why it's not a restaurant.
Have we addressed in any way, have we addressed in any way some of the issues we've had with basically vagrants? Or people wandering around with nothing to do because they're homeless? Uh, how, how are we looking at that issue?
Yeah, we've talked a lot about that and unfortunately, we need to talk more about that when we bring all the groups together and, and. Now that we're able to start meeting again in person, those discussions are hard to do over Zoom. When you need all the, the interested parties to be in the room and talk through it. But homelessness, vagrancy, all those things, uh, we wanna have those conversations as a standalone. But it definitely came up in these conversations. There's not a lot we can do to prevent, uh. Prevent that. We, there's a lot of those rules and Stephen has mentioned some of those in the past. I might wanna reiterate some of those, but we watch the neighboring communities and how they interact with the A C L U. And some of those issues with loitering and panhandling. And we are trying to come up with a way to deal with that without violating any of those rules that are out there. And it just, the world right now ties the hands of cities to deal with things like that. It's really difficult.
As you know, my concern has always been lack of really helping these people from an educational standpoint. You know, I think we've got the wording in there to do that from mental health issues and stuff, but we really haven't. But we really haven't required these people to try and help them physically. We're doing that mentally, we're trying to do that, but we're not providing any educational opportunities as I can see it.
Yeah, I think when we go to do a comprehensive approach, and we've talked to most of these entities recently to try to just get them ready for that big discussion again, like we did several years ago at the, at the pavilion, at the forum, and then council member Bowman last year was asking for us to start talking about that again. And so we have reached out and and that is an issue. The best practice seems to be a comprehensive wraparound approach. Where you're not just sheltering people, you're not just giving them food boxes, but you're talking about substance abuse and mental health issues and housing. And is it a temporary homeless situation versus a long-term issue that they're facing? It's a really difficult topic, but one we're all going to have to as a team with all of you on council and our neighboring nonprofits over this next twelve to eighteen months, really talk about that and talk about creating a standalone section to our city code related to that.
Matt, I have a follow-up question about, I didn't quite follow what you said about definitions. But I see that in our code, we don't define daytime. We don't use the word daytime anywhere. So were you saying, can you, can you tell me again what you were saying relative to definitions and using the word daytime social service?
Yes, so some of these terms and phrases are not defined. And that's intended to build in some leeway for interpretive indefinitions. So, for example, the example I gave with the cellphone, there may be uses that, you know, a social service provider considers commonplace a decade from now that we don't, you know, have any sort of language for now.
I followed that part, but what I didn't follow is, so you're saying we don't define daytime social services on purpose?
Correct.
Okay. And then I had a follow-up question. Our office residential zoning also includes social service providers and similar professional service providers. That OR district doesn't reference any of the B one stuff, so that would be unchanged.
That wouldn't be unchanged by this ordinance proposal, yes.
Any other questions? Okay, great. I'll go back to the agenda. Scroll, scroll, scroll. Okay, and we will see this at an upcoming council meeting for a vote for the changing in these municipal code revisions. Thanks for the hard work. Next up is item D asbestos abatement of in nine thirty-one North Park. Public Works Manager Jim Shide, can you tell us about this item?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. So yeah, this is for the asbestos abatement of the structure at nine thirty-one North Park. That is the facility that was our property that was recently purchased by the city. And we've, we've looked closely at it and tried to evaluate it closely, look at all the different systems in the building and the building type. And kind of comparing the costs of renovation of this structure versus demolish and rebuild. And it definitely lends itself to be much more cost-effective to demolish the structure. And part of renovation or demolish, either way, we would need to abate the asbestos first. And this building definitely has a lot of it and some very complicated. That's why the price of abatement is relatively high. And likely we would have had to do this as part of any renovation anyway. So with that, we did put out an RFP for abatement of this building. And it has taken some time because it requires us to put together a scope and assessment of the asbestos first before we can put it out for bid. And so we've been through that whole process and we did submit bids earlier this month. And we did receive, we received eight qualified bids, which is fairly normal actually for abatement. We usually do get quite a few bids. The range was pretty broad on this one and I'd say a large range, which took us a lot of time to really closely evaluate and dig through these to make sure the ones we're recommending had everything covered. So with that, we are recommending award of this contract to Acumen Environmental in the amount of eighty-three thousand two hundred and two dollars and seventy-two cents. And that does include additional fees. It's kind of, it's a not to exceed amount. Their bid is actually seventy-one thousand, but they charge fees for water and electric provided per day. And so the total amount of eighty-three thousand is a not to exceed, so it likely won't be that full amount. And as we've seen with abatement projects, there are unforeseen's. And so we did include an owner's contingency in this amount as well. And that's not, that's not part of their contract, but it's just allocating it towards a project in case there are unforeseen's that come up. For abatement, there usually is some things that are unforeseen. And in this one being as the scale it is, we included fifteen percent on owner's contingency on top of the contract amount. So with that, we're recommending Acumen for this project. And this was not a budgeted project, but I think it's, it's part of a larger project in supporting, you know, this site to become a local transit center and making those motions towards that. And so I think that's open for discussion on the financial side. But I think it's our understanding that this was to be funded out of reserve balance. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think it's fascinating that the initial bid for Rocky's environmental is less and yet their final is ten thousand dollars more. It's, it's kind of interesting, the range of bids on this.
Yeah, and that's why we specifically asked for them to put a price for those additional costs. For, this is for water and electric, so that we could see that. And we weren't going to end up with costs that we didn't know about at the end of the project. And that, that's a good example that the low bid was actually rocky. But once you consider all their additional fees and likely fees we would see, they ended up being quite a bit higher.
I'd say that's a very good job of due diligence on part of staff. Thank you. You're saving us a lot of money.
I also appreciate the fifteen percent owner's contingency on this project because every project that's ever involved asbestos seems like it's more difficult than you think going in. So how much homework have we done in order to get to where we are in terms of what needs to be done and what are the chances that a lot more needs to be done? And we'll go over that fifteen percent at the end of the day?
We have done quite a bit. I would say the chances are very low of us going over that amount. There was a preliminary assessment done even before we purchased the property. And then we even hired a consultant to continue that and go further with that assessment and further research and materials that are in the building. So there's been basically two assessments done of the building. And then that same consultant generates a scope and they oversee that abatement. So they, they describe how the trails are to be removed and what processes need to take place during that removal. And they specify all of that in their scope. So that part of it, there's likely no additional costs. Where it comes in is if a material is covered up that the assessment couldn't see. So this building, I don't know of any areas that that's a potential. But in others, when you remove one wall system and it may have been a remodel or an addition over another wall system and the wall behind it that you obviously couldn't see initially has asbestos in the plaster. That's an example of how that happens. And we do look for those things. We're, we're trying to, you know, investigate that through the assessment. And in this case, we don't know of it right now. So I don't, I don't believe we'll exceed that fifteen percent at this time.
So we've done a lot of assessments, or I might call it homework, as opposed to just starting in and saying, well, we'll, we'll get into it. We'll know more when we get into it. We actually know a lot before we start.
That's right, yeah. We know a lot. And there's multiple different types of asbestos in this building. Probably the most costly is in the block filler in the CMU block. And that's what, why they have to remove the, all of the CMU block to abate that. And that's one of the high-cost items.
Thank you for that explanation. Mr. Anderson?
Jim, can you kind of speculate or maybe explain why there's such a difference in these added fees? Most of the bids, it was like roughly ten thousand more, but a couple of them are almost thirty thousand more. And it seems like, like that's a huge S three X roughly. And how do you, how do you explain that?
You know, I'm not sure. I think maybe some contractors with less experience in this area may, they may include more money there than others to help cover their unknowns. So when you see a wild cost, that to me means inexperience and maybe not very familiar with that process and they're trying to make sure that they're not going to lose money. So yeah, ones that tend to stay with the group, you kind of see a median amount, that's kind of, that's a good sign. You know that all those countries seem to kind of know what they're doing. If you have a crazy low cost or a crazy high cost, those are usually signs of inexperience.
Good, good analysis. Thanks.
You said we're picking one of the two lowest that are significantly lower than the average. So should we have concerns about their qualifications?
No, I think because there, the reason theirs is lower also because of the days that they proposed for the project. So that plays into it if their, their days proposed makes sense where others may have an extended amount of days as well. And so that's, that's part of it. It's not only the cost for the utility, it's the cost of the number of days.
So we shouldn't be concerned that we're going with the two, the, one of the two lowest original bid and the lowest including fees.
Right, no, we, we evaluated closely looking for that in, in that, you know, we want the lowest bid. We want the most, you know, cost-effective proposal without choosing somebody that's not qualified for the work or not experienced in this. And so we do evaluate closely and have to review these bids and oftentimes ask questions to the bidders and make sure that they had everything covered. So it takes a lot of background for us to make sure we're choosing the right one.
Great, thank you.
Did all of the bidders, did all the bidders have a chance to go through the facility?
Yeah, yep, it was open. We offered a an unmanaged day that was open and they were allowed to tour the facility on their own. So we, we did not give guided tours, but we allowed the facilities open.
I don't see anybody else commenting. So we'll, we'll look forward to seeing this item on an upcoming council agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, scroll back up to page one of our agenda. That was our last formal discussion item. Now I'll turn it over to any general city council discussion about any items. I do not see anyone. And then to staff for any follow-up from any of our managers or department heads about projects that council needs to be aware of. Mr. Murphy?
Excited to say the Woodgate realignment project bids on Thursday, bid opening. So you'll be seeing the packets coming for that soon. Had a good turnout at the pre-bid, so. Let you know it's coming.
Great. Anybody else?
Just want to let everyone know that our visitor's center opened today. So it's the first day that we've been open in a very long time. And staff's ready and eager to meet with people as they come in. We know it'll be slow here for a little while, but it'd be a very busy summer for us.
Great. And that's a great reminder to me to, to let everyone know that city council will begin meeting in person in, in May with our work session, starting with our work session on May fifth. And that'll be council and some staff in council chambers with public and guests by Zoom so that we continue to meet the requirements under public health orders with the right number of people.
Madam Mayor, I just want to make a correction. April.
Yeah, what did I say?
May.
Oh, I'm already a month ahead of myself. Thank you so much. Yeah, next month, whatever, whatever like three, two weeks from now is, that month. Yeah, April. Thank you very much.
I just blamed it on me not understanding what was going on.
I like that, Doug. You just thought I was writing, yeah, no, I, yeah, totally misspoke. April, is that why you had your hand up too, Dave Frank? You could have just done like Bill and just cut me off. That would have been good. So anyway, we're looking forward to seeing each other in person. We think that we'll still be able to, to adequately allow public comment via the hybrid model and anticipate doing the full open as soon as the occupancy limit, limitations are lifted for that room. Mr. Shide?
I have no bid on the police department project. So the bid package one that we discussed recently, it has been closed now and we're evaluating those bids. So that's deep foundations, utility work onsite. So that's, those bids have already been received. Right now, there is a bid package one A is out there right now. And that's a lot of clarifications on the steel package, which was also included as part of bid package one. But we will be closing that later this week. And we'll be able to start awarding contracts moving forward. So that's, and it's exciting. I think our owners team will review those, I believe later this week. Actually, we'll be looking at the deep foundation part of that later this week. And then also our amphitheater project is underway. If you have a chance, go by the site. It actually looks like something now. It's really, it's, they have the building pad kind of laid out and the amphitheater seating area is shaped. The earthwork contractor really got after it and it is generally shaped right now. So you can kind of see, it's easy to envision the amphitheater there now. So pretty exciting. Get a chance, go by and check it out.
Are we documenting that through some photos or time lapse or anything like that?
We are, yeah. There are multiple cameras on the site. Some through our contractor and some through us as the city. And they're both doing a time lapse, so they take multiple photos every day. And we'll be able to compile that at the end. That'll show progression.
Hey, has Scott ever let you get a drone pilot's license?
They don't let me fly it. We, we have used the drone to take multiple before and we're doing that during and after shots, so we'll have multiple different angles of it.
Cool.
Great. Thank you very much for that update on those projects. How about the water tank project on top of the?
Yeah, so we're, yeah, we're out of the ground on that one. Got the foundation poured for the tank itself. So steel is going to be arriving, start arriving in a couple of weeks. That one's a really awesome, that one we're able to tie to our network because we have internet up there. So if you go to movemo.co under the water page, at the bottom, there's a link to click and watch the live view. So you can watch it in real time. You don't need Netflix if you have that, because it's awesome. But you can see the site, the pump structure is, is in place. And we're pouring the last vault, so pretty much out of the ground with, with everything here pretty quick and be going vertical soon.
How about, how about my pipe rat's nest that you were going to build?
Which one? We got a couple of those.
So that's next, eh?
Yeah.
Woodgate Neighborhood Sewer, is that wrapped up?
The, 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 yeah, so all of the kind of invasive work is done on that one. The contractor that does the lining is, the factory got kind of delayed on the liner itself. So we're still waiting on that material. But there's one pipe that was in such poor condition that we are going to have to replace it. So we're going to be doing that on one stretch. But beyond that, it's just the lining. And when they show up, that's pretty uninvasive. They just come in at each end of the line and everything they do is robotic and work inside the pipe. So they'll be doing a little bit of restoration once the hot plants open up to do some of the patching and stuff. But for the most part, over the hump on that one.
Great.
All, all, they, still uncertain on the timeline when the pipe or the lining material will show up. But hopefully within a month or two.
Great. So we keeping you all busy enough?
I mean, that and development, yeah.
A lot of projects, okay. Any other staff updates? If, if anyone wants to pop into the panelist section and chime in on anything, I'll give you a second. Okay, I don't see anything. So Mr. Bell, do you have any, anything else to add before we close this out? Okay, great. Thanks for joining us for our work session. We have a special meeting this afternoon where will be an executive session for annual reviews. And then tomorrow, we have our regularly scheduled city council meeting at six PM and that'll be on Zoom. Thanks, everyone.